We have Chairman Patrick Bray is not in attendance physically tonight. He's going to be calling in, and so we appreciate him doing that to give us a quorum, and we appreciate your attendance tonight as well. Given the challenges that our normal chairman, Patrick, would have in running the meeting via the telephone, we are requesting that you vote for a temporary chairman to run the meeting tonight, and then hopefully next month, we'll be back on our normal cycle. So, we appreciate Patrick calling in, and we appreciate your attendance, and would encourage you to vote for a chairman tonight.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Do we have Patrick yet?
Do we have to wait for Patrick? Yeah.
We do have Patrick.
Patrick should be patched in.
So, we can call the order.
Okay.
Okay. I call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, or?
Do that first?
Yeah, let's vote on who the chairman is.
I'll entertain a motion to allow me to run the meeting.
Okay.
This is Chairman Bray. I move that we install Vice Chairman Barnes as the chairman for this evening.
A second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. Now, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the secretary please take the roll? Okay. Do we need a, all right, at this time, we'll take a motion to excuse the members unable to attend due to extenuating circumstances. And can you read off the members that are not attending for the record?
And Commissioner Milton, not Milton, Walters, sorry. Milton is.
Okay. So, for Commissioners Maloney and Walters, do we have a motion?
We have a motion to excuse Commissioner Maloney and Commissioner Walters from today's meeting.
A second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Minutes. Can we have a motion to approve minutes from the previous meeting of June 14?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from the June 14 meeting.
A second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the June 14 meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Okay. Public comments. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Do we have any speaker cards for non-agenda items? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay. Seeing none, I will move on to item six. Disclosure of ex-part time communications. Do any Commissioners have any outside communications? Very good. I will move on to item seven, old business. We're going to move item, look at my numbers there. We're moving up item, is it 8.2? Is it going to be?
8.1.
8.1 is going to now be 7.1. So, we will hear the Goodyear Community Health Park Project, correct?
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Diana Camacho, and I'm the Management Assistant with the Parks and Recreation Department. Tonight with me is Wayne Colbank, Principal with Logan Simpson, and Charles Anderson, Principal with Charles Anderson Landscape Architecture. We are here tonight to let you know about a new amenity that's going to be coming to Goodyear. And first off, have any of you heard the buzz about the Goodyear Community Health Park at all?
A little.
A little? Awesome. All right, we're going to get you in the know tonight. So, what you'll see on your screen is a map of the park. It is going to be the future of an iconic, one-of-a-kind health park. It's located on 129 acres between Diceart and Bullard, separated by Litchfield, just parallel to the north side of I-10. As you see it now, it's some big flood retention basins. We're going to take this land, and we're going to develop this amazing health park. All of this was purchased from Flood Control for $233. This park is adjacent to the healthcare corridor, and you'll see just to the north, you've got a future Adelante healthcare site, as well as the current Abraza West Campus, and to the South Cancer Treatment Centers of America. We have actually partnered with, we have partnered with the healthcare corridor to create this. So, the partnership consists of the city of Goodyear, as well as Abraza West, Adelante, and Cancer Treatment Centers of America. This park isn't going to be your typical community park. The innovative park was designed to promote healthy lifestyles and to make well-being a way of life for our community. It has a specific focus on health and wellness, and is intended to promote those healthy lifestyles. This plan that we're working on, this master plan, is going to be a high-level visioning document that will allow the partnership to continue to grow this park. In the end, this park will be what Kewaunis is to Tempe, or Central Park is to New York City. So, just a little bit of background, in July of 2014, City Council approved the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and in that plan, it identified creating these basins into a health and wellness park. In May of 16, the city created an IGA to purchase the basins from Flood Control. In September of 2017, the city issued an RFQ for a master planning team. Logan Simpson was chosen as that team. In October, we were awarded a $25,000 grant from GE to continue the development of this park. And that brings us to today. We are at the master plan adoption. On Monday night at City Council, they will actually be voting to approve the conceptual master plan. So, thus far, we put a lot of work into this. There's over 22 hours, planning hours, put into this. We held two public meetings, with over 130 citizens attend these meetings to provide their input. We held four stakeholder workshops, with over 40 attendees at each workshop. During these sessions, we went through brainstorming, we did breakout groups, and each workshop built on the previous. The two final public meetings, tonight at 6:30, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission will actually be voting to recommend this to move forward to council, and then on Monday night, will be the fourth public meeting with hopefully the adoption of the plan. With that, I'd like to turn the next presentation, the next part of the presentation, over to Charles Anderson, and he will show you some insight to the park.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I'm happy to be here to present you very quickly a really wonderful project that we have the honor of working on as a design team in partnership with the stakeholders. I use the arrows, is that right? Am I going the right way? Got it. There we go. Okay. So, Wellspring Park is what we're calling the park now, and the word Wellspring came kind of organically through the process, because Wellspring means an abundance of something, and it doesn't mean just water, it could be anything. Health, you know, the word gets used a lot. And what was really interesting is we have that word, wellspringpark.com, available to us, and we thought that was kind of interesting. We brought together three concepts to make the final concept that we call the final conceptual master plan. One was called Nature Nurture, Mind and Body, and Human Nature. We pulled those together, and they covered different aspects of how you use a park. And I'll show you what I mean by that in a minute. In the context, also, we saw the park as not a typical park at all. And you can see in the context, there's some buildings that have found their way inside the park, and that's unusual in some cases, because those buildings, and I'll explain them in a minute, are part of making the park exciting and getting eyes into the park. This is the conceptual master plan, listing seven different themes for the park. One is, there's a west side and an east side divided by Litchfield Road. And we'll start with the west side. You can see Precinct A is called Engagement Spectacle. That may include a conference center, hotel, residential, and those sorts of things on the corner with parking underneath it. And the Challenge Discovery would include an amphitheater, an oasis, a landscape reminiscent of the White Tank Mountains. And Precinct C, I'll go through that in more detail in a minute, has a sort of water play, like splashing water to work in. I'll give you some examples of that in a second. Engagement Spectacle, we expect there to be an iconic building at that corner, something unique. This is Le Corbusier's building, Rochambeau. We can't have that. We're going to have something taller, but still iconic. And we also will have many gathering spaces, you know, places for people to gather for different kinds of events. And also, an iconic landscape in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see a slide that shows Saguaro's, the desert, and the grass for a golf course. Keep that in mind as we present it, because I think that contradiction is really quite magical in the desert. Am I going fast enough? Okay. So, at the, this particular precinct, this will show a cross-section and also the building. We call this Sky Islands, the building where we bring the landscape on the rooftops up into the sky. This would be iconic building for the valley that you would see particularly from the freeway, but from pretty much anywhere around here and for a great distance. The other thing that's unique here in the park is we can't rely on trees to do all the shade, so we have solar shade structures. Those can collect energy to be used in the park for all kinds of things, loading your laptop, whatever, or your cellphone, charging, that sort of thing. And they also move with, they could be hydraulic, so they could move with the sun angle, so that they give better shade and actually produce energy. The next one is the Challenge Discovery. We have climbing walls there. We have other kinds of challenges that may be in that part of the park. We have, well, a big group of people that came to our meeting, I think 30 of them at one time, maybe not that many, seemed like hundreds, pickleball people. So, there will be pickleball showing up in a number of places in the park, plus gardens for people to grow food in a small orchard. This is an enlargement of that area. You can see there's an oasis kind of event, Oasis Repairing Corridor. One thing I didn't mention is that this is a drainage basin. The water moves from the west all the way to the east through the entire park, and then it outs at Aqua Fria in a pipe, unfortunately, but through the park, it's all exposed and becomes what we call Wellspring Water Course. We don't have another name yet. So, that's a characteristic that goes through the park. You'll see that the section B shows where that cross-section is. There's a mountain landscape up by the highway, a water spill, an oasis, and then a water course next to it. Next precinct is called Water Play Fitness, and here is a place where you will have splashpads. You'll have places for people to get wet, depressions of water, and you'll also have something really incredible, and we call it Water Spectacle. We have a big drainage, a couple of big drainage courses coming into the park. This is where one of them comes from off-site, and that water will come in the park during a heavy rain at quite an incredible rate. So, we're trying to create a place where you can watch that from a safe position and go, wow, look at the water come through there. So, we're taking advantage of that in this park. We also, you can see architecture wrapping around this corner. The buildings next to it are the mall, and that's the back of the building, so this gives a nice edge to the park. This could be residential, office, retail, restaurant kinds of things. Then we have to connect the east and west side, and we put a multimodal overpass, which would be a bicycle and pedestrian. And this will take you over, but it's also quite a stretch, so we think you're going to need an interesting shade structure as you cross over. And I call this Flock of Seagulls. If you don't like seagulls, you can call whatever flock you like. It's okay. But the idea is that you're going to get shade and protection as you cross that great distance, and something interesting to go through. We don't know what it is yet, but that's an idea. Okay. We're on to the east side, and there's four precincts over here. There's the Meditation Observance. Actually, I'll show you those individually as I move forward, but there are four along this side after you cross the bridge. The Meditation Observance is a place where we have a big existing grove of mesquite that we're going to enhance and make bigger. It's one of the few forests you do have here that are substantial. You'll have a meadow. The meadow can be mowed if you need to use it for some other kind of activities. There's a large meadow. I'll show you that here in a second. There's, let me go back. So, there's places to observe the trees and observe other things in the park, like animals, like the people are doing in the lower corner. All about observance. The next one is Therapeutic and Healing Gardens, and the proximity to the hospital in Adelante, I can't say that quite right, probably? Adelante? Okay. Yes. There are neighbors there, and there's other opportunities in that area for related types of offices. So, these will have reflexology, where you can walk on rocks. We all love that, especially DG, barefoot. That's what I do for my reflexology. There could be labyrinths, there could be therapeutic gardens, places where people grow special plants, and of course, shade. That looks like this. You can see the cross-section that says, it starts with an E. On the upper portion of it, you have what we call the terraces, and this could be for events, and that's also where the therapeutic gardens can be. And then there's another terrace that could be about, also therapeutic gardens, extending down towards the water course. And then down in the lower part, you have the flood plain or the repairing area, and that is where the water that comes into the site has a chance to spread out a bit. Did it move? There we go. The Challenge Adventure, we have one more to go after this. The Challenge Adventure has a couple of unique things going on. This is the place where you can do like zip lines, other kinds of challenges that take you through the landscape, potentially bicycle, like BMX, not motorcycle. We'll keep those guys off there, and I'm an enthusiast, by the way, so it's funny I didn't try to build one in here. There's going to be, there's going to be a special place here called Colossus, and that's the, it's going to be a children's adventure playground. And I'll show you that in a little more detail in a second. And a running track that extends out over, extends out over the water course. So, you're going to, you can see it where it says K on the drawing. You can see that's an actual legitimate track, so you can time yourself and measure your run. It's not for official sports, but it's for people to time themselves and be able to run in the trees over the water and back again. So, it gives a really unique way of experiencing. Right next to it is the, is also the Colossus, the giant play, the giant playground. The next one is, the last one is G, Water Play Immersion. And this is where all the water from coming from all around the area that comes into this basin culminates. It culminates around this particular area. Here we have, have a water feature that is natural. It's a water feature that is bio-filtered by plants instead of chlorine, so that people can touch it and they can be in it without the smell of chlorine. There's all sorts of ways for the water to move through this site, but really important to understand is right next to a beautiful place where there are incredible trees, trees that you don't typically see in a park, like cottonwood and sycamore, because of the water that we have there. This area, the water play and a natural pool in the repairing corridor are important. You can see the cross-section that we show here. You'll notice that there's, where the letter G is, there's another roof structure for shade, there's a lawn area, a plaza area, and then the crescent-shaped moon piece is the swimming pool. It's a natural swimming pool. And the two funny shaped pieces next to it are where the water is purified and then runs back into it, and then it keeps recirculating, so you don't have to use chlorine. So, you have good water to play in and stuff that smells like water. Another important aspect of the park is surprises, and this is the kinds of things we hope to see in the park. This is very famous up in Fremont area of Seattle. People go there and get their selfies with it all the time. There's opportunity for first-class gardens of any type. This is at the Getty by Charles Irwin. There's tongue-in-cheek opportunities. Of course, the Europeans are really, really good at this kind of stuff. I think these are question health. Maybe you're pedaling a little too much with too much weight. And this last slide really shows the sort of character of where the water is, that you're immersed in this landscape of native trees, mesquites, cottonwoods, and the wetland that supports it. I think, yeah, we're back to the end, right? Okay.
Thank you, Charles. With that, we want to open it up to any questions, but I do want to make mention the funding for this park. So, the partnership that's been created will be responsible for fundraising and applying for grants and all the funding to construct and create this park from this point forward. So, the city has created, has funded and created this conceptual master plan, and then the partnership will take over funding for the remainder of the park. With that, did you guys have any questions?
Could you make it go west just a little bit more and connect to the trail that comes down? And, you know, the wash, and then the two would connect, and it'd be amazing. By the way, it's very nice.
Thank you.
Where, I didn't see parking. Can I park and go to the park?
No, you have to ride your bike. Yay.
Yeah. This, that's not going to happen when it's, when it's hot.
It would say parking garage somewhere within amphitheater area, maybe, or something.
Yes. The idea is that with the buildings that are within the park, and particularly the building on the west, which is a conference center, those would all have underground parking. We do have elevation changes in the basin, so we're counting on using that elevation difference to put the cars underneath instead of spreading them out over the land surface. So, that's the primary way that we're looking at the parking problem here.
Was there any discussion about bike paths in the city of Goodyear and how they would connect to this actual Wellspring Park?
Yeah. There is planning for a pedestrian bike path that comes up about at the 143rd Avenue alignment from the south, from southern Goodyear. Of course, the primary trails are going to be east and west, going west particularly over to, Bullard, I forgot, Bullard-Wash, which has a number of trails planned along it. So, going east, we're really pretty much constrained because we've got to get over Diceart, and getting between there and the river is pretty much a challenge, but that certainly is an objective we'd like to try to get at. But the trails basically are going to be operating east and west. Going north to the communities, it'll primarily be sidewalk trails and paths.
Because there are a fair amount of bike paths now within Goodyear, you know, you're kind of on it, and then you're off it, and then you're on it, and then you're off it. But being able to look at it strategically, you know, this Wellspring Park and maybe create that master plan part of it where the bike paths actually, every place goes to Wellspring.
Yes. We've coordinated, and we know that all of the trails that are planned at the moment are, there is a connection to them from this park.
That'll be great. Thanks. Love to bike there.
Will there be access? Because I know that this is directly across the street from the Cancer Treatment Center. Is there any way that we could, is there an access to the hospital itself? I can't see it on this map, but...
There is. There's actually a current railroad underpass.
Oh.
There is. So, there's already, it's already formed, and I believe it's going to be, if you look just to the left of Litchfield Road, there's kind of the white, is that about where the railroad crossing is, the white that goes underneath?
Yeah.
Between the brown circle and kind of the tan circle.
Oh, okay.
See that white line? So, there's already a connection point there, and we'll be working with the railroad to get an easement for that.
Perfect. All right. And then my last question, is there, is anything going to be done about, it's not busy all the time, but the road noise, is there anything going to be put up to?
Like a buffer?
Yeah, some kind of buffer to keep the road noise down.
Actually, the freeway and the park are about at the same elevation on the east and west ends. When the freeway starts to get towards Litchfield, it goes up and over, so most of the noise there at that high point is going to go up and not down.
Okay.
So, the real noise issue areas are really on the east and west end, and we have combinations of noise walls, although I don't want to characterize them that way, but walls that would help buffer that noise, as well as landforming and contouring that would address that issue.
Excellent. Thank you. So, we're not going to fund this out of bond fund taxpayers? You're going to try and get outside funding to pay for all this?
Correct. We, the city, is not going to fund the construction of the park. That'll be up to the partnership to raise those funds.
Hence the commercial aspect of it.
One more thing on the trails. If you notice, there's a lot of trails within the park, and they're meant to, they were designed to go as far as you want. So, at any point, you can circle back and continue back where you started, or you can continue the length of the park and then go all the way back. So, there's plenty of small inside circles also that you can get some trail experience.
Have you had any commercial businesses reach out and say, hey, we want to be in on this?
We actually have. We've probably had maybe 10 companies contact us already, and that information has been passed on to the partnership to follow up on.
Awesome. I would like to request an archery ring. Number two. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Very good. Then I will move on to old business, correct? We will now hear staff presentation for special use permit for an RV and self-storage facility, and thank you to the applicant, by the way, for letting parks go ahead of you.
Chairman, could you please open the public hearing?
I would like to open the public hearing.
Oh, it's still, or, no, I'm sorry. It was still open.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. This is Dollar Self-Storage Special Use Permit Request. The property is located within the PV 303 PAD with the Light Industrial or I-1 designation, zoning designation, and self-storage facilities are allowed within this district with the approval of the special use permit. So, it is located at the northwest corner of Indian School Road and 169th Drive, just west of the 303 and just east of Cotton Lane and south of Sub-Zero. The property is located within Luke Air Force Base's Accident Potential Zone, or APZ-2. Luke Air Force Base was notified and given the opportunity to provide feedback, which they did. Through a mutual agreement, they have determined that the facility will not negatively impact the operations at Luke and deemed it compatible. This is a look at the site plan that's proposed. If the special use permit is approved, the applicant will then submit for a formal site plan review, which is an administrative process, so it might be adjusted moving forward. Similarly, this is a look at the elevations that are proposed. The design review is also included in the site plan review. Oops. Let me just go back really quick. There are two access points into the site. The gates are provided just north of Indian School Road, and then there's a gate also off North 169th Drive. The office space is located at the front of the site, and there's park, public parking out here with room for user parking within this, within the site. And there are, whoops, let's get back. There's 5.6 acres. The proposed design is complementary to the adjacent industrial uses and within the PV 303 design guidelines. The use is compatible with the surrounding zoning and the general plan designation. The facility includes over 116,000 square feet of indoor storage spaces for individual units and 75 RV spaces. There are a few development standards that were proposed to deviate from city standards, which were described in page seven of the narrative. These deviation requests were to reduce the setbacks on some of the sides. The need for the setbacks reduction, or the need for setbacks in general, are usually attributed to building safety requirements, as well as usability of in-between spaces and aesthetic value. The applicant has provided reasonable explanation for the need for the deviation, and the site still meets the intent of the implied regulations. A neighborhood meeting was not required for the project since there are no residents within 500 feet of the property. However, postcard notifications were sent to property owners within 500 feet, and proper public notice was given for the public meetings. Therefore, since the applicant has demonstrated the need for the use and conformance with required city standards and provided justification for proposed deviations, staff does recommend approval of the project subject to the stipulations provided in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and available for questions or presentation if you would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to address the commission?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is Stephen Earl. My address is 3101 North Central in Phoenix. I am here tonight in behalf of Dollar in this request for special permit. I think Alex has done a thorough job of explaining our request. I did bring both a PowerPoint and paper versions of additional exhibits. What I brought is a colored version of the site plan, and I brought renderings of the building. This will be a high-quality-looking architecture. There's a lot of articulation to the building, both along Indian School Road, as well as the other sides. Dollar does a good job of making sure this doesn't look like a big box. They articulate the walls, they articulate the height. They put in essentially faux windows so that this looks more like an office building than a, than a storage facility. It will be gated and secured. They'll have about 25 to 30 cameras throughout the location. It also has as its prime element in the middle, a air, air-conditioned space so that, and they have facilities for everything from very small storage up to over 550 square feet. So this is designed for both residents and businesses to be able to use this storage facility when they need it. I, for, it just happens that as a firm, we have to store all of our files off-site. This would be an excellent location. Pricing is better than in many facilities closer to our office. So this is the kind of thing that a lot of people do. They store facilities here with quick access. It's gated with card access only. We've met with staff numerous times on the design, and we look forward to going forward into the site planning process. If you'd like more, I've got more, but...
Any questions for the applicant? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Because I don't think there's anyone in the audience. Very good. I will close the public hearing and open it up to discussion from the commissioners. Is there any discussion?
No.
No? Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 173500004 with staff approval.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Oh, we couldn't hear Patrick. Patrick, what was your vote? I thought I heard him say aye.
Mr. Bray, are you there?
It's raining.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Can you reaffirm for us what your vote was on this particular application?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. Motion passes. I will move on to item nine, staff communications. Do we have any staff communications?
All right, thank you, members of the commission. I did want to let you know that the sub, council Subcommittee for Board Appointments met this week, and they will be bringing forward a recommendation this Monday for a new commission member. So we're hoping that in August, we will have a new commission member. Also related to that, we did, and, and we can do a follow-up email to this to confirm with everybody, but our regular meeting in August is August 9th, and we wanted to propose having a second meeting possibly on August 23rd. The purpose of this is since we have a new member, and we even still have some members who are newer to the board, to do a training session. Also, we're working on a big project, an update to the residential standards to add new product, and it would give us a time to do a work session with you and allow proper time for that. It's looking like for our August meeting, we're going to have about six cases, and September's looking just as full. So to be cognizant of your time, we would like to propose holding a second meeting for that training and also to give appropriate focus and time to this really big project that we want to definitely delve into with you and, and hear details from you. So again, I'll, if someone has a strong feeling about that right now, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll follow up with an email, see who's available, make sure that there's enough people to make it worthwhile, because if a lot of people can't be there, it wouldn't be worth holding the training.
You're saying the 9th and the 23rd, just again?
Yeah, the 9th is already our regular meeting, so I was just kind of thinking the 23rd so it's not two weeks in a row, so they're spread out a little bit.
Okay. Very good. Any further communications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of review as we normally do, the cases that you all made recommendations on to the council at our last meeting in June. So although the Planning Commission tabled the Palm Valley Golf Course redevelopment case, if you remember that one, the staff has been in touch with the applicant, and they are desiring to move forward, forward with that case. So we're anticipating it coming back to the Planning Commission in August for our regular August meeting, August 9th. So that, we're anticipating that coming back to you by then. We are, we are doing exactly what we said we would do in terms of re-noticing and things of that nature as well, so interested members of the public have an opportunity, opportunity to know what's going on.
Do we know if they're changing it, or are they coming back with what they had before?
At this point, we're, we're waiting to get some additional information from them. I understand that they have had some internal conversations about how to modify the particular plan and so forth, so, but we'll, we'll, we'll get more information. You'll, you'll have a normal staff, staff report like you would on any other case for your August, August agenda.
Is it going to be the standard 500 feet again, like the same?
Yes, sir. We're going to follow our normal, normal procedures that we do for everybody else.
I understand.
Yep. The Bennett Meadows rezoning, if you remember that sort of infill project that was approved by the city council, the rezoning to that was, and actually, we have a subdivision plat in it currently, so that would be coming back before you probably pretty soon. The use permit for the proposed Dutch Brothers on Australia Parkway was approved by the city council, so we're excited that that one's moving forward as well. And then if you also remember, we proposed, Katie made a presentation to you in regards to the large retail user and deleting that, that requirement out of the, out of the zoning ordinance, or those use permit, but require, but still retaining those standards. So council concurred, thought that was an excellent move, so I certainly commend Katie and the staff and you for supporting that recommendation. It's very impactful. And so that's, that's where we are right now. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. See, no further business to discuss. This meeting is adjourned. I wish I could get...